Oh, there we go. Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, October 4th, 2021, and this is a Moscow City Council regular meeting. Maureen.
So I want to thank everybody for being here and to welcome in October for our first meeting and everybody enjoying the tree. Let's stand and do the pledge allegiance.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Thank you, Maureen. And with that, the first order of business is our consent agenda this evening.
To which I would make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion by Art and a second by Gina to approve the consent agenda as it is stated. I'll start to roll with Ann.
Aye.
Brandy.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
And Maureen.
Aye.
Okay. Item number two, staff recognition report. Gary Reeder, do you have anything for us this evening?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, I was gonna say, where'd he go? It's right over there.
I just wanted to, she will be very embarrassed, but that's the way it goes when you're a public official. Our very own Lori Hopkins, our city clerk, was recently elected as the state president for the Idaho City Clerk, Treasurer, and Finance Officers Association, was installed as their president on September 23rd, and they gave her this really cool little gavel so she can chair the meetings.
Wow.
So, congratulations.
Hey! Good job. Well, Ms. President, would you like to get up and speak? This is your chance as the president of the city clerks in the state of Idaho. Well, you're welcome to. Here's your free time, because I always like to listen to folks who get staff recognition report. Are you certain?
(laughing).
All right. All right. Gary, anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to item number three, which is mayor appointments. I have none this evening. Item number four, public comment, mayor's response period, and I usually limit this to 15 minutes. And what that is, as long as it's something that is not on tonight's agenda, if it's on tonight's agenda, you can't speak about it right now, or something in front of planning and zoning and/or the Board of Adjustments, you can't speak about. Outside of that, you're welcome to come up, give us, state your name, and give us three minutes and let us know what your thoughts are. Well, everybody's making it easy for me this evening. Public comment, okay, well, we'll move on to item number five, which is Citizens Commission and Port Parks and Rec Commission. We have David Shaw with us, as well as Robbie Cooper. So, David, you want to get you and Robbie up here, and you can give us your presentation.
Mayor Lambert, members of council, it's my pleasure to welcome back Robbie Cooper. Robbie and his wife Brittany have lived in Moscow since 2013, joining the Parks and Rec Commission in 2015. Robbie works as a professor of human development at WSU, where he focuses on teaching classes related to lifespan development and family functioning. He's also designed and taught courses in leadership development using outdoor recreation experience as a teaching vehicle. He came to WSU after completing his PhD in recreation, park, and tourism management at Penn State University. Today, Robbie, Brittany, and their son James live on the south side of town, calling Anderson Frontier Park their neighborhood park. And so I'd like to welcome back Robbie to give our 2021 Parks and Recreation Commission annual report. So, Robbie?
Welving, Robbie, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good to see you all again, this is the third time.
Yeah.
I've done this. So, presentation tonight, we'll start with who's on the commission. So, myself, Ted Kisha is the vice chair, Damon Burton is our most senior member on the commission, being with us since 1991, Nancy Tribble was the chair previous, Susan Steele, and Mark Heinlein, and then our newest members, Justin Mindon, Susan Peterson, and Sarah Zaski. So, just to start, the purpose of the commission is to advise the mayor and council on matters pertaining to playgrounds, athletic fields, facilities, other recreation activities on any property of the city. We plan and recommend short and long-term improvements to provide for the recreation and cultural needs of the people of Moscow, and our authority is to make recommendations regarding, sorry, park and recreation policies, programs, personnel, and budget. So, some things we've accomplished this year, in addition to other things, we had a pickleball court placed in Gormley Park, which was, that's an activity I never even heard of 10 years ago, but has really gained popularity, and we had a local group that was very happy to see that go in. Pathway development proposal for Virgil Phillips Farm Park, most notably some mountain biking trails that are introductory level, hopefully to get younger people into that activity. A couple of dedications at the 1912 Center, one on the staircase, one in the auditorium, to honor people who were very useful in fundraising for that place. We had a weed monitoring report and pesticide-free park experiment this year, where David did sort of an experimental park, trying to minimize pesticides as much as we can and seeing what happens if we do manual removal of weeds instead of chemical removal. And we recommended the Meadow Brook Second Edition Pedestrian Bridge to open up a couple of neighborhoods, have more walking, kind of greenway access to some of our parks. We also started the new play structure replacement in the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center, and made a couple of decisions on parkland dedications in Eddington and Woodbury, those new subdivisions toward the edges of towns, and basically decided to delay the dedication so that eventually the parkland could be in very desirable kind of centralized locations. We started a strategic irrigation program with what we know is going on with our aquafire and our water supply, trying to see if we can do some strategic browning of certain areas of grass, definitely not, you know, turf grass, it's important for sports and safety, but some areas that could be maybe intentionally browned, or I've heard it described as golden, which is a nicer way to think about grass that's a bit dormant. And kind of the biggest thing we're doing right now is, for a few months now, engaging in a new process of strategic planning. Our former director Dwight Curtis retired this year, and just, I'd like to mention that I always really enjoyed working with Dwight and miss having him in our meetings. But we had this kind of nice transition point where we could start some kind of long-term strategic planning that we're in the midst of now. And then just last month, on our meeting, we had our 2021 annual tour, where we get to kind of tour on the parks, see, you know, new parks that have come in, new structures that we've put in, things like that. So, just a couple of photos here. This is the pickleball courts in Gormley Park. Again, this was something that was already in the works and already in the plans, and we actually had a citizen group come into one of our commission meetings requesting that we consider pickleball courts, and it was a very pleasant experience to be able to say, yeah, we're already doing that. They were really, really happy about that. So, nice facilities over there. And then the new play structure in the aquatic center just needed an updated one over there. So, going forward for the next year, we're looking at installing a fun umbrella in, at the aquatic center and moving the fence a bit so we have some more space there, especially with the last couple of years increasing things like the number of breaks that we have in swimming, it's nice to have more space and more shade for that. Finally, putting in a playground at Milton Arthur, which kind of, it took a while just due to the way that it ended up being developed over there. Adding lighting to Paradise Pathway over between Steiner and 95. Continue to talk about consideration of becoming a B-City, B-City USA, and as I said, the big thing is continuing on with our strategic planning process. So, with that, any questions or comments?
Well, I have a comment, and I'm gonna turn it over to council here, Robbie. Projects are always ongoing, that's kind of the neat thing. Every single year, we see what's been done and what's coming forward, and that's the whole idea behind the strategic planning, is to make sure that, in fact, happens and it never dies out. So, the commission, I think, has done a really excellent job in doing it. Andy, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, Robbie. I'm wondering if the commission knows when the pickleball courts are supposed to be open.
David?
Counselor Zabala, great question. Soon is about the best I could do. There's still just a couple of loose ends we need to tie up before we can open them up.
I know a very invested party, so thank you.
Right, yes, I do as well. So, it'll be soon.
Thanks.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? And that is, will one be done, will all of them be done? It appears like one.
Counselor Loflin, there's four courts.
Okay.
Yep.
And they'll all be ready at one time?
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Gina?
Ken, either of you, or maybe it might take two of you, what is a fun umbrella?
It's a fun shade structure.
Umbrella? Do the kids jump off it?
Counselor Zabala, it's the, we have them out there already. Since we're moving that fence and expanding the turf area, it'll be additional fun umbrellas there for shading where the tables are and stuff.
Have you seen Greg Morrison walk up?
Greg Morrison, our recreation manager, might answer that better.
Umbrellas are the big umbrellas that we have overall already. I'm sure you've had a chance to be at least under them for a short period. We're gonna add a couple more on, I don't know if it's the best way, but the, where the fence is being located is we're just extending it towards the HERC, where that grass area is, and so that gives us more room. Umbrellas are the really big umbrellas that keep everybody nice and shaded.
Awesome.
Very good.
Thank you.
Brandy?
I'll just make one comment, and that, our last meeting was the parks tour that you mentioned, and I've been here for 25 years, but I saw really cool parks in areas that I did not know existed, so it's even, I think, many people will be surprised to know just how many parks you really manage, and it's pretty remarkable, so.
All right. We're probably gonna find this out sooner than later anyway, but can you give a quick glimpse of what B-City is?
It's a designation based on certain criteria that promote having, like, increasing your pollinator population. Is that a decent enough answer, David?
Counselor Becky, I still need to research it, that's why we're gonna be considering it, but my understanding is it's similar to Tree City USA. If you meet the following criteria, you're a B-City USA, and so we'll be looking forward to presenting more information to the Parks and Rec Commission, staff, and then ultimately bringing it to council on that as well.
So, I imagine things like more pollinator-friendly plantings and things like that?
Right.
Sandra?
Yeah, I just, gosh, I wanted to say thanks. I have a crazy dog, and I like to take her out different places because she gets bored easily, and I have been to a lot more parks in the last year than I've ever been to before, and they're just, they're great. I mean, I've always been a huge fan of city parks in general, but to see the intentional differences in all of our parks has been really great, and I thank you for all your hard work, because that's not a small thing.
Yeah.
Ann?
Nope, go ahead.
I was gonna say, our department does such a great job, and it's one of the, I think, the best things about this city is how many parks we have, how many parks are walkable from no matter where you live, you know, keeping people outside doing healthy things with their free time is great.
Love it. I was just gonna ask one other question. Have you finished analyzing the results of the pesticide-free park, then?
Yeah, David gave us a report two months ago on that, or, yeah, on kind of how that turned out, and we did see, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but definitely required more labor hours manually removing them, and so we're gonna continue to evaluate that, try out other parks as experimental parks. The plan is, for the time being, to kind of try a different park each year to see how that works out, and see if it's, you know, if it's doable with the amount of labor we have and things like that.
Great. I would love to see that, actually, if I could request it.
Just a follow-up on Robbie's, Counselor Zabala. Yeah, so we did the monitoring for two years, and pretty much we saw an increase of weeds and an increase of staff hours to control weeds, and so we presented the idea to Parks and Rec Commission, and then a report to council that followed, that we're looking at a pesticide-free park each year that'll rotate throughout the system, and include a playground for those with pesticide sensitivities and things of that nature.
Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention Damon Burton, who's had 30 years of service on the Parks and Rec Commission, and he resigned just recently, he moved out of our area, or is moving out of our area. Damon and I go back many decades ago, neither one of us had any gray hair back in those days. Anyway, that just goes to show you the dedication of some of the folks that serve on our commissions, they spend years and years and years, which is pretty neat that we have, and commissions throughout our city, whatever the commissions are, are very important. Of course, Parks and Rec is as well, and I just want to thank you, Robbie, and your colleagues, and please pass that on to the next Park and Rec Commission meeting. You have anything else for Robbie before you? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can apply for a position on it.
Okay, item number six is appeal of denial of the conditional use permit at 1400 East 7th Street. We have Amy. I'd like to have this this evening to present. Amy, you have the podium.
Good evening, Your Honor and council members. As the mayor stated tonight, I'm here to present the appeal of the remand for the conditional use permit for a wireless communication facility that was proposed at 1400 East 7th Street. I'm gonna go into some background, hopefully I'll keep it brief, since I think you're all familiar with the background. July 30th, Proland, or 2018 Proland LLC applied for a conditional use permit for an 80-foot tall wireless communication facility at the location 1400 East 7th Street. At that time, the facility was designed to resemble a tree. On November 18th, 2018, the Board of Adjustment denied the application, finding the monopine tower was not consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and it wouldn't be in harmony with the land, with the surrounding land uses and the subject property, and that the scale of the proposed tower was significantly larger than any other structures or trees in the surrounding area. On November 27th of the same year, Bush Law Firm filed an appeal on behalf of the applicant, and on January 7th, 2019, council reviewed the appeal and sustained the decision to deny the application. February 19th of 2021, PI, sorry, Parallel Infrastructure, applied for a conditional use permit to construct an 80-foot tower, once again at the same location, this time the tower was designed to look like a monopine, or I'm sorry, a church tower. On March 29th of 2021, the Board of Adjustment held the hearing and denied the application, finding that the proposed wireless communication facility isn't consistent with the existing character and the uses in the surrounding neighborhood. The cell tower looked out of place and would not be in harmony with the land uses surrounding the subject property, including the Nazarene Church. The surrounding neighborhood is primarily residential with a few commercial uses nearby. The scale of the proposed tower is significantly larger than the other structures or trees in the surrounding area. As you're familiar with the location, just between 6th and 7th Street, just west of Mountain View Road on the campus of the Church of the Nazarene. As you may recall, the height of the tower was about 80 feet, was exactly 80 feet. It was designed, as discussed, as a church tower with three arrays of antennas on three different levels to accommodate three carriers. Just for some perspective, this is 80 feet at the tower, the height of the cross here is at 66 feet, the church itself is about 50 feet tall. This is the entire campus of the Church of the Nazarene. The red box here, again, is the site of the proposed wireless communication facility. As proposed, the tower would have looked like this, this is a photo civilization from the north, and this is from the northeast. A little bit more background continued. The city received the appeal from the Wireless Policy Group on April 16th, 2021. On May 3rd, city council heard the appeal and remanded the matter in part back to the zoning board of adjustment with the following sole and specific purpose, to develop additional material information specifically to determine whether the horizontal footprint and width of the proposed wireless communication facility can be reduced in order to be less intrusive to the surrounding neighborhood and land uses, and ultimately satisfy criteria two. Again, criteria two is the character of the proposed use will or will not be in harmony with the neighborhood and surrounding land uses. So, the applicant's response to the remand, after doing some research, the applicant had revealed that the horizontal footprint and width of the proposed tower could not be reduced in height or diameter, and that the structure of the, the structure's location will not, cannot be changed. The reasons for that would be the diameter, well, the diameter, so the antenna arrangements are in a traditional three-sided configuration. They allow, they're on a secured triangular platform with mounts that allow the antennas to be tilted up and down, side to side, in order to direct the signal. Antennas are nearly flush with the outer walls of the structure, giving no room to reduce the overall diameter of the tower. Additionally, the four-sided tower is also important, because each carrier has a different network configuration, which would require the triangular platform to be rotated differently. This is a top-down view of the inside of that structure, and as you can see, the antenna arrays are right up to the side, and that allows for that rotation. Additionally, the height, antennas require vertical separation between three carriers, the separation between its own various antennas based on the different frequencies being used to prevent interference between antennas, and then additionally, to provide for the two additional co-location spaces and still remain tall enough to be technically viable for other carriers. The location, the Church of the Nazarene had provided a letter on why the tower's location is ideal. They had concerns about the underground utilities and potentially restricting access, and they also cited that the natural screening of the trees and other vegetation was superior in the location that they had chosen, as opposed to other locations on the site. After determining that the horizontal footprint and the width of the proposed structure couldn't be reduced in size, the applicant submitted three alternative tower designs for the board to consider. Alternative one was the current tower design with some modifications. There would be cutouts in the base of the tower, starting at about 40 feet from the top. Racks of decorative bells could be placed inside horizontally in the space where the windows would be provided to alleviate some of the visual bulk. There's also an option for additional decorative detailing on the four sides of the tower design to incorporate more elements of the church's design. It would look something similar to this. As you can see, the window cutouts here, starting at about 40 feet, that allows for the antennas to still remain up in this upper 40 feet of the structure, yet break up some of the bulk at the bottom. Alternative two was proposed as a three-legged tower design. This design reduces the visible bulk, the three-sided design also potentially reduces the co-location opportunity on the tower, and this was not the applicant's preferred alternative. It would look something similar to this, just a tri-pole structure with some, you know, upper panels to hide the antenna array. The third alternative was a monopole. The traditional monopole design can be far less bulky than the enclosed tower structure. It can be painted to match the prevailing background to further reduce the visual impact. The diameter of the antenna platform would be consistent with the proposed tower diameter, but the support pole would be slimmer, starting at 22 feet, or 22 inches at the top, tapering to approximately 35 inches at the base. And it would look something similar to this, although the array of antennas at the top would come down to about 40 feet. This one just shows one array of antennas at the top, because we require additional opportunity for co-location. It could, all the way down to the 40 feet, have the arrays of antennas. At the hearing, public testimony was received, in addition to three emails received in opposition of the proposal. Written testimony in opposition to the proposal was received by seven individuals, including a petition that was signed by 56 people. At the hearing, public testimony was received by six individuals citing concerns of sound because of the weekly generator testing, height of the structure, need for additional cellphone coverage, no need for additional cellphone coverage, rather, and the proposed tower did not fit the character of the existing neighborhood. Public testimony in favor of the proposed tower was heard from a total of five individuals. The Board of Adjustment decision was to deny the application for the conditional use permit, and finding that the proposal didn't meet the criterion two of the relevant criterion standards, and the Board of Adjustment approved the relevant criterion standards for the conditional use permit on August 30th of 2021, and then the city received an appeal by Wireless Policy Group on September 8th of 2021. Which brings us to today, where council has the option to sustain the decision by the Board of Adjustment in whole or in part, reverse the decision in whole or in part, remand this decision in whole or in part back to the Board of Adjustment with comments and instructions for further consideration by the board, or take other such action as deemed appropriate, and of course, direct staff to prepare a written decision based on council's actions. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to, Amy, before we get council involved, I'm gonna have me and our city attorney speak on what can happen and what cannot happen, what this council can do, so on and so forth. So, me, I'm gonna give you the floor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Lambert asked me to just kind of provide a quick summary of the parameters of this appeal hearing, and as you know, Moscow City Code dictates the process of the appeal, and the thing that's important here today is, when considering the merits of this appeal, no additional public testimony or information shall be taken or considered by the council. And so, the council strictly, the parameters of this is, you have to strictly rely on the record that's been provided by the board. I've asked Amy to help in kind of regulating that, so if you're asking questions, for example, where the answer would be providing new information, that's not part of the record, I've asked Amy for some assistance to step in and try to bring that to your attention. So, we have to be mindful of the questions we ask, that we're not asking questions that would prompt a response, that would provide new information, that's not part of the record.
Okay, is there any questions for me from this council on the instructions here? Okay. Any questions for Amy? Okay. With that, I would be inclined to hear from the appellant, whoever is representing, or would like to come up, sir, come on up and state your name for us here, and we will listen to you.
To start out, my name is Josh Leonard, and I'm with the law firm of Clark Wardle, LLP. The firm's address, PO Box 639 Boise, Idaho, 83701. Good evening, Mayor Lambert, members of the city council, thank you for letting me be here. The last time I was in Moscow was 2004, and I was taking the bar exam over at the hotel, and this time I was studying for this, I think this is a little bit less stressful, As was mentioned, I represent the applicant, Parallel Infrastructure. I also, before I jump into my presentation, I want to thank staff. Staff has done a great job and has really held us to the line of the zoning code on this, and has done a great job and are an asset to the city. Just a quick roadmap, I'm gonna do a timeline of the applications. That's pretty duplicative, just given what Amy just said, so I'll blow through that pretty fast. Discuss the remand, again, a little bit duplicative. Quickly hit on some applicable zoning code provisions, hit the new alternative designs, couple of clarifications there. Discuss harmony, aesthetics, and visual impact, and then a couple of things of additional testimony on remand, to end with a suggested process, and I'll get to that towards the Again, this is pretty duplicative, not gonna spend a lot of time here. We did submit an application in 2018 for the, what's called a stealth monopine. It wasn't a hit, to say the least. It was not, I don't know if it was anybody's favorite. It was not, I don't know if it was anybody's favorite, but it, it, it was denied and then that denial was upheld here at the city, the city council. Current application, Amy went through this, I don't need to, to belabor it too, too much here. I would note that, that city staff to the Board of Adjustment recommended approval and, and that the Board of Adjustment, when they denied it, found that it met all of the specific use standards for a telecommunications facility and ten of the eleven relevant standards and criteria generally for a CUP. Again, re, on remand, specifically, you can't really see it very well, but it was to determine whether the horizontal footprint and width of the proposed wireless communication facility can be reduced in order to be less intrusive to the neighborhood and surrounding land uses. Sent down to the Board of Adjustment to develop additional material information. The Board of Adjustment, I'm going to go back one for just a second. I'm going to, I'm going to discuss our results of, of our process of, of going through and trying to reduce this footprint a little bit. The, the Board of Adjustment held its, held its meeting and considered three new options. And I have to tell you, going back to the transcript of the Board of Adjustment, I was fascinated and I, I recognize that it's because I'm a land use lawyer that I was fascinated and probably nobody else would be. But there was some confusion at the Board of Adjustment about how far their authority went and what they were authorized to do. And so they kept it pretty tight. One of the, one of the things that I think caused a little bit of a problem was they didn't think they could approve the option four, is what I'm calling it, but it's that tri, or that three-legged design. They didn't think they could approve that and they didn't vote on it. They only voted on the, what, what I have been calling the bulky church tower with the cutouts, the windows on the side, and then the monopole, which is just a standard monopole painted to fit the surroundings. It was pretty clear to me after reading the, the transcript that the, the board wanted to approve an option. And in fact, it's, it's not clear on here and I apologize, but the chair, Mr. Bazzoli, said, "The problem here," and, and I want this to be on the record or part, as part of the record, "We want to approve this." They just didn't understand the extent of their thought. Really quickly, I'm going to touch on these, but I'll come back to them. The three alternative designs, the tower with cutouts, the three-legged tower and the traditional monopole. Something I want to point out, it's an error on the photo sims. I should have probably played a game with you to see if you could catch what the error is. The center one, we took that tower off of another project and didn't, and we failed to scale it. So on this picture, it appears larger and taller than the other ones. It's not. It would be at the same scale as the other two.
In height?
In height, thank you.
Okay.
We heard what the, what the city council said back in March. Councilmember Beckey talked about the robustness of the tower and that it was excessive. Councilmember Kelly wanted it more aesthetically pleasing. Councilmember Loughlin, it seemed that your, your concern was primarily with the scale of the tower. It was your motion that was seconded to remand it back for consideration. Councilmember Sullivan, the large presence and the mass and the distance from the church were your concerns. And Councilmember Terusio agreed with the excessive robustness of, of the tower and still had concern about the, the scale of the tower, but felt it was within the code and that that was what had been requested. And then Councilmembers Zavala, you asked for clarification on the height. The applicant went to significant effort and expense to produce some alternatives. None of these, obviously, the, the, the monopole is the cheapest and would be choice number one. Choice, but the applicant is willing to build, operate, or build and operate any one of these options. Really quickly, applicable zoning code provisions, conditional use. Means a use permitted in the zone. And the reason why it's a conditional use is that last, the bottom there with the emphasis, because it requires a special degree of control to make uses consistent with and compatible to other existing or permissible uses in the same zoning district. So it's allowed in the, in this, it's just subject to conditions. One of those conditions is what form it takes so that it's, it's compatible in the area. It, it's my feeling and, and I think it's borne, borne out by, by, by state code and in IDAPA, that the goal with a conditional use permit isn't to deny it, rather it's to find a way or find conditions that allow it to operate without, without impacting, negatively impacting the, the surrounding neighborhood. And when I say negatively impacting, it's specific because almost any project has negative impacts on the surrounding property. The goal is to use conditions to mitigate those negative impacts to the community. As I mentioned, the conditions that are available, we believe, can be imposed to mitigate concerns and to make this compatible. And we've proposed several designs to make it compatible. Although, just, I have a fifteen-year-old son and a seventeen-year-old son and I'll tell you, they think that cell towers with good wireless signal are about the most compatible thing to residential ever. Really quickly into the neighborhood business zoning district, it's the lowest commercial zoning district. This is, these are the purposes. I've highlighted them in green, the purposes that are met by the application. The one that I left not bold and in black is more towards identifying the zone than it is to uses within the zone. But those, each of the other three are ones that this, this zone or that this use meets. The general conditional use criteria. Green is we meet, red is we don't. The one that we don't is that the character of the proposed use will be in harmony with the neighborhood and surrounding land uses. And I'm going to come back to this in just a minute. The rest of them, you can see here, this, the purposes of the, the standard, the specific use standards and the general conditional use criteria, and the purpose of the zoning district, as well as the specific use standards for a wireless communication facility were deemed met. The purpose. Purpose. Let's see, I'm sorry about how hard I'm seeing. Encourages the co-location. So the first two are easy, they're, they're somewhat together. Minimizes the number of antenna towers and encourages the co-location of telecom facilities. I can tell you that in this case, the applicant has the ability to put the required number of co-locations on this tower. And to update something that was said, that Amy said a few minutes ago, it, even the tripod tower can accommodate all of the needed co-locations. There's not a limitation based on that. And I'll come back to that again in, in just a minute.
Hang on just a second, sir.
I, I thought that the three-legged one could not, could not meet co-location for three.
A mistake at the, at the Board of Adjustment. It can. It can meet the three required co-locations or the, the initial anchor tenant and the two locations for a total of three.
And here's a follow-up question is for you, Mia. So that three-legged one, what we're talking about, that's not new information, it was discussed.
Correct, it's in the record.
Correct. So, okay, very good, Mr. Leonard.
Just looking for clarification on that.
Yep, thank you.
Let's see here. D, I want to talk really quickly about D. To me, the key word in D is minimize, not eliminate visual impact on the surroundings, but minimize visual impact on the surroundings. And I think that, that's key. As I said a few minutes ago, almost any, well, not almost, any development project has visual impact. In some cases, if it's a design that someone likes, that's a positive impact. If it's a design that's, that they don't like, it's a negative impact. One of the, the members of the Board of Adjustment said, "Picking a design is like picking art. There's, there's no accounting for taste." And, and that's true with, with buildings as well. New alternative designs, the tower with the cutouts. You can see the cutouts towards the bottom. One of the options with that is to, to put artificial bells, a row of artificial, non-ringing artificial bells behind the, the windows. Or they could just be left blank and, and completely transparent to, to hopefully minimize the visual bulk, if not the actual bulk. This option was voted on and not approved. It was a four-two vote against. The next option is a three-legged tower. And remember, this is not scaled correctly. I'll go back one so you can see it. It's that height, but with that profile. So it would be lower than it's, it's depicted there. This option significantly reduces the footprint of the facility. In fact, it reduces the actual bulk, the horizontal bulk and footprint of the structure by 1,280 square feet. And again, it still can fit one anchor tenant and two co-locations. On, as I, as I said a few minutes ago, on remand to the Board of Adjustment, we said that it was the least favorite design. That's not true. It, it is, it, we are willing to build any of these, these ultimately five designs, whether, if you want us to resurrect the tree, we'll go there, but, but any of the four that are before the, the city council. The next one is the simple monopole. And again, as Amy pointed out, this one only has one antenna array at the top. The one that we're proposing would have three, so it would, it would cascade down that, that pole just a little bit. The pole itself, obviously, is the least imposing, the pole, but then with the antenna array on it, it's going to be as wide at, at the antenna array as the, well, almost as wide as the initial, what I call, again, the bulky tower. Also, although it was technically outside the scope of the remand down to the Board of Adjustment, we, as Amy said, we inquired of the church whether we could relocate or move the location and due to utilities, underground utilities, and primarily underground utilities, but it also would have affected their access and it also would have put it close to the church and against, and against a window, not against, in close view of a window. And, and they, they preferred it here in addition to not, not working logistically. And again, I want to be clear, any of these designs would be acceptable to the applicant. Harmony, aesthetics and visual impact. Here are the four areas of the zoning code that deal with the harmony, excuse me, harmony, aesthetics and visual impact. In two places, I've underlined them, you can see that, that the project is required to minimize visual impact. I didn't list out all of the aesthetic considerations, that's on slide 14, I can go back if you'd like, but those include such things as either paved or gravel road, a fence, a six-foot tall fence, and in this case, it has to be masonry because it's, it's adjacent to a residential use. One thing I wanted to focus on here, that the character of the proposed use will be in harmony with the neighborhood and surrounding uses. The character of the proposed use here is one that's, to provide signal to residential, commercial, visitors, all that, all that are in the area is in harmony with the neighborhood and surrounding land uses. I recognize that a use gets wrapped in a skin. And in this case, that skin is typically a monopole tower. In the city of Moscow, you don't like them. A lot of people don't. You've taken steps to make it so that you can, you can have some control over the design of your tower, which is why we've come forward with the additional, additional options. Additional testimony on remand. Wayne Kraus, his mother lives in the area, his services through AT&T does not get good service. His sister with Verizon has no service unless she goes into the backyard. Kevin James lives next door to the proposed site, I think he's the closest resident. And his testimony was that his least worry is what the proposed wireless communication facility looks like, he just wants better cell service. Shirley Green, I liked her testimony, she said electrical poles are ugly. And she's right, driving, driving in, I, I noticed, actually, I probably noticed that more because of her testimony. And that was mentioned by the Board of Adjustment, by, by Chair Bazzoli, that especially those that are along Mountain View, which is adjacent to this site, that are more than sixty feet tall. And if they weren't there, applying the criteria that are used for cell towers, they probably wouldn't be allowed next to residential uses unless somehow disguised. Renee Jansen has further, her, her grandparents are ninety-five years old and she wants to be able to ensure that she can get in contact with them as needed. Suggested process, and before I click this next, this next, to this next slide, it's way less complicated than it looks. Really, all we're asking is that the, the city council first do an up-down motion, upper-down motion on whether any of the designs, regardless of design, is approvable at this location. And the reason for that is because of the confusion that we saw at the Board of Adjustment, where just weren't sure who, I mean, they had favorites, they, a couple of people didn't want any tower. I think it's just cleaner if, if there's a, a, up-down based on, or subject to determining the actual design, approved design of that wireless communication facility. As I said, it's easier than, than I wrote it on a PowerPoint. I broke one of the cardinal rules of PowerPoint, fifteen bullets and too much text and everything else. Our, our question is, if not one of these designs at this location, then what design and where? What's approvable if not this and, and here? And especially because we've, I haven't had time to fish a lot lately, but when I used to backpack and fish, I used to hike the, the Uintas of Northern Utah. And one of the things I learned was if you put a, a lead, a leader on with several hooks and several different types of bait, you're bound to catch something. In this case, we've, we've floated a buffet, so to speak, in terms of designs and, and ask you to approve one of them. And I would stand for questions.
Questions for Mr. Leonard?
I'd like to ask Mia a question first, actually.
Okay, this goes to Mia, ma'am.
So, is it new if we want part of the decoration changed?
It sounds like the company's willing to, you can certainly impose conditions. So if you choose to reverse the board's decision and allow for this to be constructed, you could place conditions regarding design.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Leonard? Thank you, sir. If we need you, we will call you back.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Okay, I will turn this over to council now for further discussion.
Mia, can you tell me how you, how we distinguish between reduce, minimize? You know, there's those words that come out, one is harmony, one comes out and says minimize, the other one, the word that's used a lot is reduced? And so that, I, there seem to be somewhat different words used in the various code sections which were put up there? And how do we interpret those three together?
Well, as both Amy and the, and Mr. Leonard put up on the PowerPoints, all the elements were met, both within the zoning code, within the relevant criterion standards, with the exception of the one, whether it's in harmony, and you're right. That specific criteria within the city ordinance does not provide a roadmap, if you will, or clear guidance as to what factors should be considered in making that determination for criteria number two, which I think is part of the reason why we're here and why the board struggled and why the council struggled and then remanded it. And so that's for, for you all as, as a legislative body to decide if you believe that what's been presented to the board on remand and the information that you have now, if that to you is sufficient and meets criteria number two. If you feel it's sufficient and meets criteria number two, you certainly can reverse the board's decision.
And that has to do with, this council was looking for a smaller horizontal footprint in that criteria two, isn't that correct?
That was my understanding from the testimony and from what I read in the record, that one of the concerns was regarding the mass of the structure.
Okay. Brandy?
So, I'm assuming when the Board of Adjustment makes their decision, all their criteria need to be met? Or is it just most? Or is it all but one, according to our code? Do they need to determine that all their criteria are met when they are writing their standards of relevant criteria?
Bill?
Your Honor, generally, yes. Generally, they're looking for compliance or they are imposing conditions to achieve compliance with those relevant criteria and standards. So when you look at the wireless communication standards, trying to minimize the visual impact, and then you look at the relevant criteria standards that apply to all conditional use permits, whether it's a school, or it's a church, or some, or it's any, or a daycare facility, it's a fairly general term that is trying to ensure that the board has the ability to impose conditions to ensure that the use that is listed as a permitted, conditionally permitted use in that zoning district is in as harmony as it can be with the surrounding area. So you could have a, you know, large-scale lattice tower, or a cable guy-wired type, you know, radio tower that would not be consistent, but the board has the ability to impose conditions to disguise it, to camouflage it. And those were two options that are provided to try to make it in harmony with the neighborhood, or at least as compatible with the surrounding character of the neighborhood as it can be, given that the use is a permitted use in that zoning district.
Right.
However, criteria two is the only concern by this council.
Right, so despite the alternatives, the Board of Adjustment deliberated and still found that criteria two was not met in their majority opinion.
Correct.
But I have one other question with the, the green points that he put up. One of them, I think it was C, said preference to an existing building or structure or tower. That's not, where does that fit in? Because...
That's the, if I may, that's just the general guidelines of the wireless telecommunications ordinance of the city. We try to encourage co-location on existing structures where they are available. So we have a number of wireless carriers on our, on our water facilities, or water tanks, or they're on Theophilus Tower, or they're on other existing support structures where there are tall structures that are suitable to provide the elevation needed to provide the service. We encourage co-location. We actually make co-location a legal right by right, a legal use by right, so you don't have to obtain a conditional use permit, so long as you're not projecting a certain distance away from horizontally or vertically above the support structure. So that's always our encouragement, is to avoid the construction of wireless telecommunications facilities and to promote co-location. But there are locations where there are no structures that may meet that need, and therefore you will receive an application for a wireless telecommunications facility or tower.
Who wants to go next?
I have one, I mean, is there no possibility for this to be on the actual church structure, building?
That's, that is something that would be new, so...
I think that was in the record previously, that they needed to get to that 80 feet of elevation roughly to provide the coverage that they needed. That was included in the coverage maps that were provided in the packet to the board.
Let's give Mr. Leonard back up. He has his hand up, and we'll see what he's got to say on this.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Leonard, I appreciate the opportunity to answer, and that's a great question. And Mr. Bellknap is exactly correct, that the lowest structure needs to be, the tower needs to be 80 feet tall, and the church, the cross on it is only 55? Is it 55? 60? 66 feet? So the lowest one, they have to have separation so that their frequencies don't jumble. And the lowest one has to be significantly below that. So I think it starts at 40? And then has to have a gap, and then another array, and then another array. And I can tell you that as part of the due diligence and are required by city code to go through the process of seeing if there are other structures that are tall enough to serve this, based on the carrier's co-location requirements, or, excuse me, based on the carrier's search range. In this case, facilities in and around the Vista Water Tank were considered and ruled out, a potential new tower at Carroll Ribeiro Brink Park, co-location on Eighth Street Water Tank, and then potential new tower on commercial property nearby, all of which were examined and could not meet the requirements of the carriers for coverage in this. The other thing is, the city code has a couple of almost, not mutually exclusive pieces, but they, but co-location is required. The ability to have, if you're going to be over 80 feet, you have to have two additional. If you, that, being that that's also required, it almost pushes towers to be 80 feet, to be able to put those antenna arrays where they need to have them, so that they can produce coverage.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you.
Gina.
I have to say that I'm glad we're not resurrecting the monopines. I thought that was a scary thing. Looked unnatural. I do think that what I, what I've seen here tonight is a serious, good-faith effort on the part of the parallel infrastructure applicant, thank you, Maureen, to try to fit the character and the aesthetic and the surrounding neighborhood. I think the proposed steps forward are probably good in that I think we need to decide if indeed we are going to, what's the verb?
Reverse.
Reverse, thank you. If we're going to reverse the decision of the Board of Adjustment, or, and I think that's separate, and then the whole design thing, I've, I've got to tell you, I'm not a, I'm not a wireless communication facility designer, so I'm a little bit uncomfortable with all of that. I think there are passable choices that have been presented to us.
Thank you. Art.
I'll give it to us. Harmony is a really nebulous and qualitative concept. Trying to quantify qualitative issues is tough because it means something different to everybody who's involved. And when we considered this the last time around, we asked for a decrease in horizontal width and, the horizontal area and the width, both, which represented bulk. And bulk, from what I, my opinion about harmony is bulk was detrimental to its location there, but with the redesigns of the facility, they all reduce the visual impact, which is the bulk. So if you can minimize that visual appearance of the thing, I think that the appellant has done their due diligence and done a good job with that. I particularly like the four-sided tower with the cutouts in it, because to me, that reduces the visual appearance of the horizontal width, which is the bulk, and that's the intrusive part of that original design. So I tended to favor that one when I looked at the pictures of them. Also, it's good to keep in mind that through co-location, having one tower is going to be a whole lot better and less intrusive than having three separate ones, and that weighs on me, too. So I think that with the work that's been done here to reduce the visual impact and the appearance of bulk, which is the qualitative, in harmony with the neighborhood thing, you can't get away from it entirely, but as been pointed out, minimizing the impact is what's more important here. And so that's where I find myself leaning on this.
Ann?
I don't think I have anything specific to add in this moment.
Okay, very good. Sandra?
I would say, this is, I appreciate the effort and the work, and it makes a lot, makes a lot more sense, isn't the right term, I don't think, but I, like Art said, I appreciate the changes that have been done. I like the minimalization of it. I am, I would, I am concerned, when I talk about design, about being in a neighborhood with a gigantic cross on it, because there are many people that do not find that comfortable, and that makes them very nervous and uncomfortable. And so while I don't mind, I don't like the big giant bulky tower. I think that's how, or Leonard said in the back, but the bulky part I don't like. But the other two, I can absolutely be okay with, but I, I mean, looking at their neighborhood, it would depend on the design and the, the display of it, I guess, is where my concerns are at this point, which is why I asked about design. I'm, I'm fine with the minimalist monolith pole that just holds all of them together, but I think we need to be careful to remember that there are many in our community that would be very uncomfortable by something that large.
Maureen.
I still get stuck between harmony and reduction, and I guess I almost interpret harmony as, you know, reduce the impact, the visual impact of it, in a way, because if we hold it to harmony, then you can never, ever, in a residential area, have a tower. And I think that's not going to work in a town where people really do need better access to technology. And I, too, have a phone that buzzes on at different times, and, and so that's really frustrating. And I do have two kids that are into major tech stuff, and I think that even when I was campaigning two years ago, it was a huge issue on how do we expand and have better access? And I think the other part is, is that, maybe it was part of this record, or maybe it's just something that's come up in the previous one, which is the idea that, we just, I guess my sense is, I think the need is there. That's number one. And I think the answer is, number two is, how do you define harmony? And I think that we can define harmony in a way that does minimize the impact, because if we don't interpret that way, then we will never, ever have a tower in a residential area. And from my understanding on past presentations here, the distance that these towers work is significantly smaller than like a 4G. And that my own concern is, is that I don't want a ton of those in all the neighborhoods. So the, if you get one that has three, it's a whole lot better than having three separate towers for one neighborhood. And that's a big concern for me. It's on the way to figure it out, to make that happen.
Brandy.
I think, this, I remember this part of the conversation last time. I think that, that criteria number two, we've all acknowledged, there's some, some degree of interpretation to that. And the Board of Adjustment has, again, said that they determined that this is not in harmony with the existing neighborhood, based mainly on the height compared to the surrounding buildings and trees. So I, I don't see anything that would make me feel that their judgment, that this is not in harmony with the neighborhood, was spurious, if that's the conclusion they came to. And I agree that maybe this is, how does, how does an 80-foot tower, how is that in harmony with any residential neighborhood, where you have houses that are house height? I agree with that. So as far as what's before us right now, though, we can't look at that criteria and change it, or debate it, or, you know, maybe that's something to happen for the future if this is a problem moving forward. I can see that Bill wants to say something.
Okay, Bill.
Your Honor, I was just going to, speaking to the height of the tower, because the zoning code promotes co-location, it drives a taller tower. And if somebody doesn't put in a taller tower, they have to sign a written agreement that they will swap it out with a taller tower if another carrier wants to co-locate on that site. So the code is dictating that it is our, you know, it is our goal to co-locate facilities and to have fewer, but taller, structures.
And that's a city code, Bill?
Correct.
And I think the challenge is that there are some arguably things that are contradicting each other, and the Board of Adjustment was, in their deliberation, determined that criteria two was not met.
Well, there was some confusion there amongst maybe some of those. Well, I heard that several different times. Acrit, Bill?
Again, I would just, I would just caution that it's, we don't want to utilize one of the criteria to essentially eliminate compliance with a code that is promoting the co-location. The goal is to try to make that taller structure as harmonious as we can with the surrounding area, because we have already identified that it is a permitted, conditionally permitted use in the zoning district. It's actually in a commercially zoned district that's adjacent to residentially zoned properties. And so we've already identified this as being a conditionally permitted use, and it gives the board or the council an appeal discretion to try to make it as harmonious as they can, but the applicant is trying to comply with the city's code, which is dictating and promoting the idea of the taller, taller, but fewer number of telecommunications facilities.
Okay, and so then the last time, when we remanded it back for the Board of Adjustment, to see if the applicant could reduce the footprint or locate it closer, and the answer was they couldn't locate it closer, but in some parts of this, it said that they couldn't reduce the footprint. However, I hear that some of these options do reduce the footprint.
What was 1,024 square feet or 1,034 square feet that I wrote down?
Okay.
Okay, who wants to talk next? Wants to take a say, Art? I'll let you.
I've kind of done my piece. I think that the facility is needed. I think the applicant has done a good job reducing the visual imposition on the area. Can't do much about the height, but the width and the horizontal projection of a tower has been reduced. And because harmony is nebulous and qualitative, I think they have minimized that to the extent possible. And for sure, one tower is better than three of them hanging about. And so, I don't know, I would make a motion to reverse the decision of the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Art and a second by Gina to reverse the decision of the board in whole, any further discussion before I call a rule on that.
What does that mean about the three designs that we saw?
We do that in a second.
I think that what that means is that we, given two different, we have adopted the process that the applicant has agreed, that offered, right?
Let's go to Bill.
Your Honor, it would be my, because harmony with, harmoniousness with the neighborhood has been the primary area of concern, I would really recommend the council select an option if you're going to reverse the decision, so that you can base your decision on that. I think just remanding, or reversing the decision, I'm sorry, reversing the decision to the board without a selection would not be our preference. I know that's what the appellant had requested the council to do, but because there's been so much discussion and concern about the nature and compatibility of the facility, I think if there's, something's been presented by the applicant, I think the council really needs to settle on that and then include that in your decision to reverse the decision, if that's what you choose to do.
That would have been good if it would have been in our proposed actions, which it was not.
So, but I guess I want to take issue with that proposal, because it made more sense to me to say, yes, we think that it's harmonious, and then pick which of those they are, because I guess the answer is, I don't know, at least it gives you a fair reading in terms of how people feel about allowing this to be in a residential area. I want that vote first, myself, and then we can start talking about which, which of the four or five, or whatever they are, proposals is the best and what amendment. So for instance, if the cross doesn't work for somebody, can we change that? I guess my own sense is, I would like it to be two votes.
Is there, are you getting an opinion on this? You're talking to Mia.
Well, I'm not the city attorney, but...
Well, I hear you're talking to her, seeing as to that question.
Well, it seems to me that you want to keep the record as clean as possible. There is a chance, whatever remote, that this could get appealed to District Court, should either the applicant or somebody else be dissatisfied with the result. So to make a finding, a motion that we reverse the decision, what exactly does that mean? Suppose you can't come up with the design that, that is preferred? So I would agree with Bill, that my preference would be that you couch your motion in terms of reversing the decision in favor of a design that the council can agree upon.
Okay, well, would the motion make her like to...
I would like to modify my motion to reverse the decision of the Board of Adjustment and put forth the tripod version of the structure as the preferred replacement.
What is that?
Which one is that?
The three-legged.
Number three? Is that option three?
It's number two, the tripod that has empty space at the bottom and all the...
Where'd Amy go? Amy, could you tell us which one that is?
It was the one that was too tall in the picture.
Yeah.
That was number two, then?
Well, number two there, but then on the final list, it was bumped down one. So there was a disagreement.
Okay, well, let's go up there and take a look.
So it's number two of what was presented tonight.
Didn't I close my presentation? Can't you open?
You know we're going to go on, Amy.
And for the record, it is the, there is only one option, that was a tripod option that was presented.
Okay, so there was only one, the tripod option. Well, you could pick... Well, you could make it, okay, Art, if I understand this, your motion would be to reverse the decision of the Board and select the tripod option.
Yes.
I will still second that.
Okay, all right. So now, we have a motion by Art and a second by Gina to reverse the decision of the Board and accept the tripod option on this tower.
Yeah, so it's that one.
That guy right there.
Yep.
But not that tall.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I think so, now it's, since it's like official discussion time, I think the monopole is the least out of harmony with the existing area, although it's going to have a lot of visible antenna on it, but.
It's a skinny pole with an island of antennae.
Yeah, I'm with that, too.
Well, okay, well, we got this, we got this one, so let's take a run at it and see.
But I would like to hear what everybody else thinks about the various options before we're ruling on this, because in fact, I don't want to come back to this one if we lose on the monopole. If we lose on that, then I guess my own sense is, I would like to hear everyone's discussion on which of the options they like best before we vote.
Okay, well, what do you like? You don't like this one? You don't like the tripod option? Or is that an okay with you?
I'm still thinking about it.
Okay, okay, I'll go to Gina. Gina's okay with, how about Sandra?
I would be fine with it if we have a condition that there are no religious insignia on it.
I'll go to Brandy.
I think probably, as far as being harmonious with anyone who happens to live in that neighborhood, and I don't know who happens to live in that neighborhood, it's going to be very visible. So I would tend to agree with Sandra, that just having any specific religious symbol, regardless of what it is that's that looming large, would cause me to think it's a little out of harmony. So that's a lengthy way to say I,
As long as it isn't.
This is nice, because it does hide the antennas, but I would have a concern about any symbolism on it that is so dominating to the neighborhood.
How about you, Ann?
I wish it was the correct height visually in this moment.
Yeah, it is really hard.
Because I also, I still feel a little bit unclear. So if it's going to be shorter, is the length lost in the section at the top or the bottom?
I think the reduction in the graphic here would be proportional, both shrinking down, but the shroud would also shrink, and it would also come in sideways a little bit, too. Because this would just cut and paste it in, and if you were to shrink it, you'd have to take your little dot on your graphic at the top one and reduce the whole thing.
So the legs will be shorter and the white part will be smaller.
Bill, is that correct?
I think the applicant testified it was 40 feet clear and 40 feet that was solid at the top, and that would make up the 80 feet, so it would be equal distance.
So if we could look at one of the other ones, just to see visually about where half of that 40 feet would be?
Right there.
Yeah, so it's like about the top of this.
So it would be just top of the windows in that particular example.
Would be the three legs. Would go to about there, and, yeah.
I find the three-legged option most compelling in terms of reduction in impact and just visually overall.
Now, that's the tripod.
I have a question on that, and I guess my question is, is that the reason they came up with the tower is because they wanted it to be consistent with the church. And so my only question on that is, information that we don't have, which is, would the pastor still support it if it didn't have a cross on it and the symbol on their property doesn't have a cross on it?
Well, that's, that's.
It's outside our.
Go to Amy on this.
So the pastor was at the hearing, and he did support all three alternatives. There was no discussion about whether the cross insignia would be there or wouldn't be there, so that would be new information. But he was in support of the three different designs.
But that could be a condition that could be put on it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so.
But I think if he agreed to all three, that means he's also agreed to the other ones not having a cross on them as well, then. If he agrees, there's no question.
Well, you can't, we can't speculate that, Maureen, we just, it's, you know.
May I modify my motion again?
Sure, Art.
To reverse the decision of the Board of Adjustment to propose the tripod version of a tower inclusive of co-location and remove any specific religious insignias on that tower.
How about you, Gina? Did you get to that one? Reverse the decision of the Board.
Yeah.
In whole, and select a tripod option with the removal of any religious insignia. Is that what you said, Art?
Sandra just seconded it.
Yeah, so, and I'm good to step away from this.
Okay, so we have a motion by Art and a second by Sandra, then, to reverse the decision of the Board in whole and accept the tripod option with the removal of any religious insignia. Sound good to everybody? I understand, I'll start the roll with Ann.
Is it possible for you to come back to me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'll go with Brandy.
Okay, so we are proposing, so this will not go back to the Board of Adjustment. We're just overturning that and approving the tripod, which they did not actually vote on at the Board of Adjustment.
That's correct.
Okay. Contingent upon the.
Removal of any religious.
Them agreeing that that would be acceptable with that design.
No, the board's out of this.
No, no, I mean, to the telecommunications, the appellant.
Well, this is, this is a criteria we can put on it.
Right.
This is a criteria that we're doing.
Okay, so, aye.
Okay, Art.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
And Maureen.
I have a question following up on what Brandy said, and that is, can you make it contingent upon the pastor and the church agreeing that?
Nope. No, that's not what we're doing here. Either yes or no, Maureen.
So, meaning that it's not up to the, right, it would be, the telecommunications would have to comply with that.
Aye.
And I'll go back to Ann.
Aye.
Okay, so this passes unanimously to reverse the decision of the Board in whole and accept tripod option with the removing of any religious insignia within that tower or pole. Bill?
Your staff will need direction to prepare a new reason statement relevant criteria for the Council's consideration at the next council meeting.
Okay, we'll need a motion on that, then.
I move that we direct staff to prepare the relevant criteria for presentation at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Art and a second by Sandra to have the staff prepare the relevant criteria and bring it forth to the next council meeting. I'll start the roll with you, Maureen.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
Brandy.
Aye.
And Ann.
Aye.
Okay, we're clear on that, very good. Thank you very much, everybody, for their work and efforts on that. With that, we will go on to item number seven, which is Rolling Hills Ninth Edition Final Plat. We've got Mike Ray with us this evening. Hi, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, council members? Doing well, thank you. So before you tonight, we have the review of the Rolling Hills Ninth Edition Final Plat. As you recall, the area in question is highlighted in red at the center of your screen. It's about 2.3 acres in size. This is outdated photo from 2018, but the street, I see Third Street Extension has been extended from the Harvest Hills development here to the northwest. That's all been constructed, and the majority of the homes, and this is Rolling Hills Eighth Edition, was the earlier subdivision that's in the middle of construction right now. On May 26th of this year, Planning and Zoning Commission conducted the public hearing, and this is at the consideration of the request of Ryan Atani for the subdivision of the 2.3-acre parcel, and it's generally located east of the intersection of Third and Sixth Streets. It contained 10 single-family lots, and they ranged from a little over 7,300 square feet to 8,461 square feet in size, referred to as Rolling Hills Ninth Edition. The Commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat with two conditions. The first one was a stormwater control analysis and design in accordance with the city's standards. And then the second recommended condition was that the applicant extend Third Street 19.87 feet to the east to align with the eastern property boundary of Lot 6, Block 2 of the proposed subdivision. City Council then conducted the public hearing, and it occurred on June 21st of that year, and approved Rolling Hills Ninth Edition with those same two conditions. And this was the final plat that was submitted, so 10 lots, essentially virtually the same as the preliminary plat that was reviewed by the Council. You can see the two conditions were satisfied, so there's a stormwater detention pond outside of the picture here in Rolling Hills Eighth Edition. That was increased in size to accommodate these 10 lots, so that was satisfied. And then the corner of the subdivision was extended to the eastern property boundary of Lot 6, Block 2, to account for that second condition. The staff has reviewed the final plat for compliance with city and state code requirements, found it to be in performance. And the Commission did review the final plat, and that happened on September 22nd, and they recommended approval to City Council. And with that, staff recommends the Council approve Rolling Hills Ninth Edition Final Plat. And I'd certainly try to answer any questions you had.
Questions from who? From anybody? Gina?
I'll make a motion if we're all kind of quiet. I move that we approve the Rolling Hills Ninth Edition Final Plat.
Who's second?
There's no conditions, no.
Okay, we've got a motion by Gina and a second by Art to approve the Rolling Hills Ninth Edition Final Plat. I'll start the roll with Ann.
Aye.
Brandy.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
And Maureen.
Aye.
Okay, we will move on to item number eight, which is Amendment to City Code to Correct the Management Reorganization. We've got Gary Rehner with us, but Mia is going to present. So Mia, you have the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I don't have a fancy PowerPoint for you. I'm going to keep this rather brief. So just a little bit of background, back on October 7th, 2019, the City Council passed Resolution 201919, which authorized the implementation of the reorganization management model. And at that time, you directed staff to prepare ordinance revisions to align with that reorganization. If you recall, back on July 19th, 2021, when it was presented to you by way of ordinance that you ultimately passed, 202109, it was quite significant. When our city clerk was caught finding the city code, she caught a few errors. During that timeframe, there was a few updates in 2020 to two of the code sections. And so before you is a proposed ordinance that corrects those errors. And also, as we were going through it, we discovered that back in 2008, the, the, what's now called the SEC, used to be called the Health and Environment Commission, and that was changed in 2008 to the SEC. So this also addresses that code amendment that, to update that Title V, Chapter 11. So I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Mia.
I move that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Brandy and a second by Maureen to approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings that be read by title and published by summary. I will start the roll with Ann.
Aye.
Brandy.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
And Maureen.
Aye.
Now, we do have an ordinance. Do we have a number for this ordinance? President of the State of Idaho's city clerks?
I'm sorry, no, I don't have a number.
You don't? Well, we'll wait till you find one, dear. Ordinance 2021 dash something. 14?
About 18.
18, wow, okay, so we've got. Ordinance number 2021-18, and an ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho Municipal Corporation and the State of Idaho, providing for the correction of ordinance number 202109, providing for the rescission of the Section 8 of the ordinance 202109, and a clarification that the Moscow City Code Title III, Chapter 11, shall remain unamended by Resolution 2021-09, providing for the rescission of Section 24, ordinance number 2021-09, and that the corrected amendment of the Moscow City Code Title VI, Chapter 2, providing for the corrections of Section 18 of the ordinance number 202109, specifically the Moscow City Code Titles V, Section 11-5, providing that all sections of this ordinance of number 2021-09 shall be in effect, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. And that was a mouthful, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for whoever wrote that up for me to read. But that is the end of our meeting agenda, but I am going to go into reports, because we had such a long one last time. We didn't do reports, so I'll start with Art.
Oh, good. I've actually got stuff this week. So Moscow Farmers Market Commission met on September 8th and discussed a great many things. The Tuesday market that goes on out at the fairgrounds has produced some vendors who would like to join up with the farmer market downtown, as well as the Tuesday market, so they're wondering about what the process is to join up, and that has been forwarded on to them. They're still working on the design templates that they've got for the new farmer's market logos and things, and discussing issues of Moscow Farmer's Market vintage 1981 versus established in 1981. So that's an ongoing bit of verbiage they're doing. But most of the wrangling was involving, what do you do with cider? How do you identify local when it comes to cider? So is it where it was squished and produced? Where did the apples come from? So they wrangled around a bit and judged that as long as they say that the apples were produced locally, that is, within the 200 air miles, that's the definition of local for the farmer's market, that it's okay, as long as you have a sign out indicating that, yes, these apples were not grown exactly on-site, which sounded like King Solomon with his sword with the baby there. So they split the diff on that one pretty good. Let's see, Moscow Volunteer Fire Department discussed a lot of things, a great deal of it hovering around what goes on this Saturday at the fire station relative to the pancake feed. And I don't know as they've exactly come to a conclusion on how to handle the pancake feed. As their fundraiser, there was a lot of leaning toward, come in, pay your money, and we'll give you the pancakes in a container, and off you go. They didn't seem to be too thrilled with having a bunch of potential COVID people traipsing through their home. I got to agree with them. So anyway, they're still working on that. They're also working on a points system to determine whether or not somebody is in compliance with full training and answering calls and things like that. So they're making good progress on that. It sounds like they got the EMS guys taking care of, they're still working on the fire department proper about that one. Let's see. Next up, Smart Transit. They're in the process of doing a salary survey, because their drivers are few in number and having difficulties attracting, because they're paying like $16 an hour, and people are starting at McDonald's at $15 an hour. And so a salary survey has been initiated to determine just how much is a Smart Transit driver due for salary. And also, it was determined that the dial-a-ride folks need some new equipment, so they got two new buses bought with some of the reserves that they have. And Moscow Urban Renewal Agency, back on September 16th, approved the budget, which is good, and also was happy to announce that now all the lots in Alturas, which we closed three years ago?
2015.
A long time ago. Anyway, only one lot remains, and the rest have been sold, and the monies generated from the sales have been, or will be, turned over to the taxing entities in proportion to their share of the tax.
Brandy.
Uh, let's see, went on the Parks Tour with the Parks and Rec Commission, which was very cool. As I said, some hidden gems in there, different types of natural spaces to enjoy, not all with playgrounds, but also more playgrounds on the way in several neighborhoods. Also, the Arts Commission met and approved our new Moscow poet laureate, Stacy Bo Miller, who will be our poet laureate for the next four years through 2024, I believe. So we'll have lots of great things to see from her. Also approved a request for qualifications for the next round of the Mac activities toolbox art educator, and that was a program that they started in 2020 to get. Art Educator, and that was a program that they started in 2020 to get these art supplies and instructions, curricula, out to three different age groups in the community for free when, when everybody was kind of stuck at home, and, and it was very popular, so looking for a couple other arts educators to design two new toolboxes, and presented the Public Art Annual Project Schedule for 2022. The Andrew Becker Memorial Art Installation Selection Panel was announced, and that is for the permanent sculpture that is being donated at the Transit Center, and that, that application process is still open, so you can, I'm sure, find that on the city website, how to apply if you're interested in having a permanent piece of art at that facility.
Thank you, Brandy. Ann?
I don't have a ton. Tomorrow is the tree commission meeting, historic preservation was canceled last month, and the only big one is that PKC did bring two finalists to the Palouse, and I know some city folks got to meet with them. I do not believe there's been an offer extended yet at this time, there's no updates, but that happened about two weeks ago, I would say, so hopefully we'll have something to share soon.
Okay, thank you. Sandra?
I went to the SEC meeting, and that was really all of prep for our climate workshop that we held, I believe, last week, and I just saw the films twice, or the PowerPoint twice, so it was nice to be extra prepped for that. And, um, CETA, they hired a new executive director, and I wrote it in my other notebook, and I am embarrassed that I cannot remember his name. Thank you, thank you Gina, I was hoping she'd bail me out on that. And Mayor, I'm gonna turn this one over to you, because Pathway's canceled, but they had their in-town tour, but it was at five, and I wasn't back in time, but you told me you went on that tour.
I did, and I will give a report on that when it's my turn, so thank you for bringing that up. Gina?
P back, first of all, we, Sandra and Maureen and I, and you were there too, did that leadership.
Yeah.
Afternoon, and that was pretty exciting. We learned that the summit, the water summit is gonna be October 21st, but unfortunately it's gonna be virtual, but we'll still get to hear it, so there's a silver lining. The report on the water alternatives, we all heard at our climate change workshop mid '22. So, Clearwater RC&amp;D, and I was going back and making sure that I had the right numbers. They're essentially winding down, and right now they are at 50% project completion, and they're into closeout activities. We went through how much of the $300 stipend to the executive director went towards medical and which went towards office. It was, it was painful. But there, they should be, they should be done very soon. I anticipate probably mid to late '22, we, we will have the dissolution. Looks like CETA is gonna be carrying a lot of the weight for this organization. Transportation Subcommittee met, and I had an action item and a couple other people had action items, and nobody did it, so I got mine completed last week though, so I'm feeling good about that. We will meet again coming up this Thursday, correct? I was lucky enough to sit in on the NOCO interviews for their new executive director. I thought one was entertaining and funny, and the other was not a good fit, so I don't, I haven't heard anything about offers, I'm looking at Gary because he was in, well, Gary and Bill both, you guys were in each of the, I, we have no feedback on that.
Okay.
But it was, it was exciting.
One candidate withdrew, and the other one, I don't believe, has been determined what the go-ahead is.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So there were two P and Z meetings since the last time I reported, and all those issues have come in front of us. So there we go. But I think I would just point out what I thought was most interesting in the last meeting, because we were done really quickly, I didn't realize that P and Z receive a monthly magazine on planning and zoning issues, and so when there's not a lot on their agenda, they sit down and have a dialogue about whatever issue happens to be in the magazine, and from that also came a need and desire to have Tyler come and talk about water, and a whole series of different ones that they want people to come and educate them on, and I appreciated the fact that P and Z doesn't just make decisions, but they also want to collectively educate each other in the various issues that are affecting P and Z throughout the country. So, there's P and Z. The Human Rights Commission just filled, finished its Racial Equality and Inclusive Community Month in September, and they had three events, and the theme of the whole thing was "In This Together," and so the very first thing they did is on September 16th, there was a conversation on voting rights, and they had a professor come in and talk about that. September 21st, there was a specific discussion on are we in this together in search of a common good in education? And the third one was a movie recently on September 30th at the Kenworthy, which co-sponsored with the Lata Human Rights Commission, called Legacy, Shared Legacy, and something that I think many people weren't aware of, it really addressed the issue of the coalition and friendship between the Jewish and the African-American communities during the civil rights movement and up until today. And after the movie, they also then had a panel discussion on that, and so again, the commentary on that is, the Human Rights Commission is pushing out, on every year they have a month of presentations on whatever theme that is, and I appreciate how much work they do on that. And I will also say that some of you may have filled out a questionnaire that in fact was in various businesses, asking questions about the community, and so there is a video that has come out yet, and the commission is now, that has come out, and the commission is now trying to decide exactly how they plan to use that, talking about inclusion and problems and everything else in our community, so that we've still not made, they've not made a decision on what they're gonna do with that and how to use that in a constructive manner. So, those are my two reports.
Okay, well, thank you, Maureen. As Sandra had spoke, on September 14th, the Pathway Commission did do a bike ride on the pathway from the pedestrian bridge on Third Street, and we went, wound around, went down through the fairgrounds, and, and went under the underpass on Highway 8, and then we went to the end of the trail by identity there, and looked at where the proposed under, way will be sometime under 95, and had a lot of questions, it was a pretty, pretty neat thing, but we also stopped at the Meadowbook Bridge, going on that the council had approved just recently, on that nice little division, and that's just right down the pathway by the Carroll Rotary and Brink Park, and the ball fields and stuff, and that's gonna be a nice connectivity for several of the nice little communities to get right to those playfields, so it's really, it was really neat. And then we stopped there at the park and had a sandwich and just BS, there's 25 of us riding our bikes and stuff, so it was, it was a good evening, we had a good time with it, so, very much fun. Then they had an airport board meeting on the 22nd, and we talked about the usual things, and this, something that'll be coming in November, we had it scheduled for a terminal workshop on October 11th, but that's gonna be changed to sometime in November, and Gary will give us a better update on that, and with that, I will turn it over to you. Gary, you got some?
I can't believe you're not gonna talk about the Entertainment District event.
I didn't want to brag about it. I knew you'd bring it up, and.
Well, since you didn't, we had our first Entertainment District event, the Moscobo Fest, last Saturday night. It was huge, it's sold out, and it was a great time, was had by all, so I anticipate that'll be the first in several of those coming, forthcoming. The mayor mentioned about the Airport Terminal Workshop, we had originally set for October 11th, and I want to thank you for your tolerance in us moving these workshops around, they're somewhat dependent upon when data is developed and to the point to where the council can direct on decisions. So, met with Tony Bean, the Airport Executive Director, today, they're still working on some things, it won't be finalized probably in the next couple of weeks. We do have the American Rescue Plan Act and CARES Act workshop set for October 25th after Administrative Committee and Public Works Finance Committee. We elected to leave that where it was, because there are some things that need to be done in preparation of the audit that we can't scoot that back to take the terminal workshop. So, tentatively, the terminal workshop would be after Public Works Finance and Administrative Committee on Monday, November 8th, so same time, 5 o'clock, right after the work, or right after the, the committee meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's go.
Everybody in favor of that?
Yes.
8:39, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.